Karen Cartwright, is Ms. Cartwright? Oh, she is here. I didn't see her hiding behind that beautiful hat. You recognize Ms. Cartwright. You have five minutes to justify.
Good morning. Um, Mr. Chairman, I would like to tell you that I have a lot of stuff that needs to be addressed in Overtown, so I want to get through it.
You're on my side, so I know you're fighting for it.
Ladies and gentlemen, my name is Karen Cartwright, and I live at sixteen hundred Northwest Fourth Avenue in Overtown. There are five things in life you cannot recover. A stone after it's thrown, a word after it's spoken, an occasion after it's missed, a time after it's already gone, and trust after it's lost. Overtown has been used, abused, and neglected for many, many years. It had numerous representatives, some of whom made countless political and financial promises, only to deliver risks of saying. Each one grasped the power their electorate willingly gave and in return neglected to address the cancerous apathy consuming the once prominent and thriving black community. Afforded housing conditions, poor, staggering joblessness, so-called affordable housing, massive slum and blight, and infrastructure long outdated. It lurches forward. A major issue currently is the ongoing homeless encampments. Overtown residents currently has no rights. It appears the homeless encampments are being imposed on the Overtown community by the City of Miami, surrounding municipalities, along with their affluent influential residents and their supporters utilizing, not in my backyard, manfa. Currently, we have a mobile truck operated by the University of Miami and a Mr. Tokes aiding and abetting in the homeless occupancy in and around Northwest Eleventh Street and Northwest Thirteenth Street area, dispensing needles and gifting Narcan Tuesdays and Thursdays, thus coinciding with the assigned water truck sidewalk cleanup. Who gave permission for Overtown to be used in this incubator experiment? What insults me most and most residents of Overtown is the fact that the majority of homeless are former residents. We have citizens, residents from everywhere, and Overtown appears to be the melting pot for all the City of Miami and its neighboring municipalities. Drug-addicted and homeless undesirables. There are no excuses for them being allowed to occupy our community, and none will be accepted further. Mr. Tokes, Mr. Book, the City of Miami's administration, Miller's House, the Homeless Assistance Center, the Salvation Army, the Mission, Camilla's House, and the Sisters of Charity all surround Overtown, and their impact is negative. All of you, including your predecessors, never once hesitated to vote for this disastrous nightmare, the decline of Overtown. Enough! Get a workable plan. I would be inclined to listen to the excuses if we were talking about former Overtown residents, rather crime, drugs, and its accompanying paraphernalia. I've learned that there are vacant positions for law enforcement in Overtown. Listen up, City of Miami. Is it because, as one officer stated, working in Overtown currently, "Overtown is boring"? Correct me if I'm wrong, but isn't policing supposed to be about protecting and serving? Or is protecting and serving a pathway to entertainment? Or is it keeping a community safe for its residents and visitors, even those who appear to not want to be released? Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. said, "Do not allow anybody to make you feel like you're nobody," and the residents in Overtown are somebody. On that note, when is the City of Miami Police Department going to start giving its employees the individuals that they chose as supervisors the tools and equipment to perform their assigned jobs? Withholding or minimizing tools needed means poor services. Why can't Overtown be treated, say, like brickell? My bad, no millionaires, no parking signage enforced. Northwest Nineteenth Street, between Northwest Third Avenue and Northwest Fifth Place, signage missing and not enforced. Northwest Seventeenth Street, between Northwest Sixth Avenue and Northwest Seventh Avenue, not enforced. Northwest Ninth Street, between Northwest Second Avenue and Northwest Third Avenues, not enforced. The residents in the town parks have assigned and visitor parking. So does the villages of St. Agnes and the Cary Meek Manor. Northwest Nineteenth Street, between Northwest Miami Court and Northwest First Place, have signage, no through trucks, not being enforced. Who is charged with enforcing responsibilities? Hurricane Irma, the category-five storm that wasn't. All the hurricane, storm disaster prep meetings, and what? Overtown and her neighborhood still has pockets of landscaping debris, trees uprooted and falling, sidewalks blocked by shrubbery, light poles tilted or down completely, signage down, lights not working, potholes in streets, properties with storm-related debris, and seemingly no plans for removal. Overtown's code compliance officer is on a helter-skelter mission everywhere but Overtown. We have damaged fences, overgrown lots, broken sidewalks and tree stumps, and illegal dumping. Help! I was promised that Overtown's hurricane-related issues would be addressed in forty-eight hours. I'm still waiting, but alas, nothing, nothing was done without Karen Cartwright. Overtown has again been given a backseat to the more affluent areas' issues. What a pity the former occupants of Coconut Grove Village and Overtown weren't clairvoyant. The City of Miami would not have been incorporated in July twenty-eighth, eighteen ninety-six. The consent decree that is currently morphed wouldn't exist, and probably neither would women and Hispanics that currently are part of the City of Miami's Police Department. The emblem that graces every ladder head, every uniform, every City of Miami document was designed by the late Dr. Robert Ingram, a former City of Miami Police Officer. On Northwest Eleventh Street and Northwest Fifth Avenue sits an historical building. Miami's historical relationship with the police and the community whom it served gets little or no support. It has been ignored, given a spoon-fed minimum assistance in its preservation. Why? FPL Promises, nothing. FDOT Promises, nothing. Public Works Promises, delivery, a few exceptions. HUD Promises, code violations, substandard housing, mold, mildew, and asbestos, and to top it all off, vermin. Miami-Dade County, where do I begin? Overgrown lots, poor housing maintenance, lifting, lighting offenses, parking violations by occupants of Courtside, Lurk Plaza, Island Living. Courtside occupants also hinder the City of Miami's solidway street sweepers from doing their job on Northwest Fourth Avenue. FDOT and other no trespassing, FDOT's no trespassing and other no trespassing signage are violated every day. I've also seen police officers driving by and ignoring the crime in progress. The crime may be a misdemeanor, but it's still a crime. FDOT fences are continuously being breached. Who needs to be better information sharing and enforcement? The road construction improvements of State Road Seven. Who issues the road construction permits and enforces them in the City of Miami? Unfortunately for the residents in Highland Park and the surrounding businesses, they have an air pollution issue, dust and unsightly, and an unsightly mass of excavated road debris, along with sand, because Northwest Fourteenth Street and Northwest Seventh Avenue is a staging area and storage for the workers. FYI, the lot being used is Miami-Dade County's corrections property. No water truck is being used, no proper screening of the area. I do not consider a screen enclosure of three feet in height adequate.
Where's that one?
Northwest Fourteenth Street's right above your house.
It's probably one foot tall. It's not even...
They said, excuse me, Mr. Chairman, they said it was three feet. The only problem is I'm five foot four, and it don't reach to my knee, so we have a little problem. But hey, who knows? Alapara needs to address their properties that intersect Overtown. A wise man said, "One should not laugh when others fall or are victims of their egos. Learn from their fall. Learn from their fall. Do not laugh because Lady Karma is the equalizer." And just FYI, to the employees who continue to practice medicine without a license, a piece of unsolicited advice, it's a crime punishable by a prison sentence.
Mr. Chairman, may I, uh, I agree with you, man. I have been to Overtown, and I was the principal budget, uh, principal economic analyst for the Overtown Park West redevelopment project when I worked for the City of Miami back in the eighties. And I would like, I mean, would like for the, if I may, ask the city manager to take all actions necessary to address the concerns that you have and make Overtown a better community, I mean, more served by the City of Miami.
Mr. Adam, um, my problem with Thirteenth and, between Eleventh Street and Thirteenth Street on Northwest First, from First Place back to First Avenue. I don't know who gave the University of Miami carte blanche. I love the University of Miami, love everything that they try to do, but there's some words I can't use in this commission chambers that I would hardly use to them. Everybody in Overtown has rights. How is it that the City of Miami can quote Pottinger's edicts to me, but they cannot come up with a plan to help my community deal with this problem that most of the people on Eleventh and Thirteenth are not from Overtown? Are the people from Delaware, from Alabama, from Arkansas? How did the City of Miami just sit there and let this happen? You represent me, Ms. Edmondson represents me from the county, and I'm looking at this every day.
Ms. Cartwright, I will tell you, first, you are right.
I don't want to be right.
You hear what I'm saying to you? You are right. I know you know that you are right. I struggle with... I struggle with understanding if many of the powers that be, people who have authority, people who have...
Control of the money?
Not even control of the money. The people who are the, the person who, who actually has the ability to, who has the job to go out and ensure that the streets are clean, that there are no homeless encampments, that there's a, there's, there are no drug sales going on, all of these things that people have the authority to do, I struggle with really understanding if they want or they do adequately their job in those communities. And I say that to you because if I put a tent on the public swell out in front of near Monty's, I don't think that tent will last ten minutes.
Two minutes.
If I put that tent in front of City Hall, I don't think that tent will last. I've seen police officers move along people in Wynwood. Not someone with a tent, but just someone who's standing on the sidewalk, talking to people as they walk by. But I witness permanent housing being built near Jackson Soul Food. I see it near, I mean, this is the thing. Remember the little boy that passed away from the ingestion of the drugs? The one thing that the news media didn't talk about was that this was down the street, a stone's throw away from, we know where they sell the fentanyl.
Yes.
So it's not, it's not a, it's not a puzzle to me of how he came into contact with this thing. So I said it to say, in the CRA, we gave an additional, I mean, now it's probably more than three million dollars towards assisting with policing in Overtown, that I felt was going to add to the presence of police there, but also give us, give us more bodies so that the things that were going on there will cease going on. Because it's, it's like, it's not rocket science. I mean, if you take yourself right now underneath the expressway, south of Fourteenth Street, next to that building, a man sits in that white van who sells drugs out of his van, he says he lives in that building, I witnessed a drug sale, or I witnessed someone walk up to him and say, "Can I get a rock?" He looked at them and said, "Why do you think I sell drugs?" And I mean, I've witnessed the people there underneath myself shoot drugs, overdose, knock and come, you know, I've seen it all myself, not from responding from a police call, but from being there. And so if all of this is happening in the same spot, at the same time, every single day, how is it that I'm paying for additional police presence? How is it that you have all types of police, um, you have all these different task teams, but the only thing that you can ever get complete, or you manage to do, is to ticket someone for staying, um, in a, or, is to bother someone who has a scooter parked on the corner of, 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 next to a business who's providing delivery services to the community? So my frustration with this is just as much mine as I can see is yours, because the way that I see it is that there's no way that these communities should be suffering from this. And so my issue is that I, the manager and I, we speak about this greatly. The manager has, has done, I know that he's done a lot of different things.
Ms. Adam, this is just as much the community's responsibility as it is. The reason that I'm coming here is because I have grandchildren, and I've talked about them before. I have children in the neighborhood that I tutored, that I'm watching die, okay? I am not happy. I am aggravated by the point that I have to look at these kids laying down and trying their best to move forward, but how do you move forward when everybody is blocking your way? If I, if I use my grandmother's philosophy of handling stuff, I'd walk up to you and ask you, say, "Excuse me," and then when you don't move, I'll ask to walk around you, but the next time you don't move, I'll punch your lights out. That won't work for anybody now, because if I'm Ms. Cartwright, I'm going to arrest you. But that is my reaction now to Thirteenth Street. That is my reaction to Northwest Second Court. That's my reaction...
Make you walk in the street.
Yeah, I walk everywhere. I have homeless people telling me that I should walk in the street and not walk on the sidewalk.
Not a Cartwright. Listen, we had a meeting of the CRA on thirteen, thirteen. We were there, right? And the one thing that I was disappointed about was that it was...
They cleaned it up before you got there.
The people weren't there.
They cleaned it up because they did not want that little bubble to hit them. When they, like, when I said I was coming to City Hall to talk about this, they all said, "Well, they're not going to do anything." And I said, "You don't want to me off, because it will not end nice." And I'm saying this, this is, I'm not coming back here to say this again, because on that street in Overtown, I walk everywhere, and I know where I have help and where I don't. I'm not like Ms. Holmes. I do not go to dead anything. I saw enough deaths when I worked in the hospital, so I don't do that anymore. But I am, neither am I going to sit back and be quiet about them not taking care of this problem, this problem, but along with all the slum and blight and all the other garbage, I need this taken care of, because if you put lights, if you get a well-lit area, it's a lot better than having a dark area for them to do their activity. And nobody wants, nobody wants to improve the lighting in Overtown. Nobody, because all they, everybody says, FPNL said to me a week ago, "It's not their problem. Talk to the city." When I talk to the city, it'll know it's, you talk to FPNL. So who do I believe and who is responsible for what? Because I can get photo cells, I can talk to the park director and get photo cells in the mini parks and, and I can't even get it on the street? Why? What is it about my neighborhood that's fascinating to people who live, who don't even know about Overtown? But they get out of jail and they're in Overtown. They get out, Homestead people, Overtown. Miami Beach people, Overtown. What is it about Overtown? Because, like I said, no boats, no helicopters, no airplanes, no nothing. So how? And the staff in Overtown, the staff in Overtown needs help. A month ago, we lost a service center aide because what? Some brilliant person don't even know how to count? But me, the next time I'm here, I'm coming with a lawyer. Thank you.
Mr. Manager, like Commissioner Riz said, we have to, we have to... I want, it's almost like I want to write a poem, because maybe in the poem I can be honest, and people will take it as art. Because when you have art that's offensive, people stand for it, but sometimes speech that's offensive, people won't stand for it. And so I say that to say, the frustrations, every, it's almost like many of our employees drive through Overtown, county employees, they see the same things that, that the people who live there see. Police officers who police the area, you know when the lights are out. Lights shouldn't be out for fourteen, fourteen days, et cetera, an FPNL light or horsepower electric light. We've talked many times about Fourteenth Street, Seventh Avenue, that, that, that they're doing staging on now, that the corrections department has that, if you see this, before they didn't have a fence, and that's not a fence. It looks like a mini flag that's long enough to just travel all the way around. The dirt is probably fifteen feet high, and I don't know the code violation for it, or what, what, it just looks wrong. As lawyers, you realize when you're in court, people never, like, I didn't understand, like I know now, the, I didn't understand certain rules when, like, evidence code, right? Evidence code is not just something that you have to know, it's something that you have to feel. When you're in court and something starts to turn in your stomach as a lawyer, because they're saying something regarding your client, sometimes you just have to say objection, if you don't know what the objection is, because it's objectionable. This, what I'm seeing in these neighborhoods is objectionable. Expansion of certain homeless facilities, the proliferation of the homeless facilities, she's right. You're exacerbating an issue in a community, and no one seems to give a about it. You know, the fact of the matter is that Miami-Dade County releases all of its, all of its arrestees in Overtown. Everyone knows that that's where you go to buy the best drugs all over the nation, they feel that way. But we don't have a handle on what's happening. Yes, do we sometimes go in there and have raids and get things, make some arrests? Yes, that does happen. But there is no, there's no reason to me that I would think that we can't have it all the time presence in certain areas that have these types of issues. I understand. You can't chase gunshots. You know, that's one of the most difficult things. Unless you're the federal police department, because the federal police department, they put resources into investigatory tools that kind of stop it from happening as best as they can. But when it comes to, to major drug sales, at seven o'clock in the morning, you can watch drug sales. I'll tell you where. On Third Avenue, there's a corner, there's a corner laundromat. Next to the laundromat, there's a store. Those guys are at work at seven in the morning. You just sit there or drive by. You watch the hand-to-hand transactions. It happens every single day. All of the elevation that we have in Overtown, where you have perfect views of what's happening, and we can't stop these things that are happening. So to me, the only thing that, that, the only resolve that I have, and I'm sorry that we took all this time to do this, but the only resolve that I have is this, is that you don't want to stop it. You don't want to stop it. And, and I find that very difficult to believe, because, you know, I'm a son of a law enforcement officer who believed in, and, and, and getting involved with things like this. Most of the officers that I interact with are officers that want to stop some of these from happening, but... But it can't be. They have the same conviction about things that, that, that Ms. Cartwright, that Ms. Cartwright has, that Stewart has, that many of our neighbors who are in those neighborhoods have about solving the issues in their neighborhood. I feel like we get it done. We certainly have all the resources. We have all the resources at our fingertips. We have, the police officer says, "Listen, remember this. We had emergency orders to put fencing on vacant lots." You know why I did the emergency orders? Because I didn't want to fence in Overtown. I don't want to look all fenced in where you have vacant lots. But the reason was because they were setting up homeless encampments all over the vacant lots and dying next to people's homes. And then the police officer would say, "Oh, well, it's a private, it's a private lot, so I can't go in there and check the private lot because it's not really trespassing, blah, 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 blah." But a police officer also knows that if he can see that there is criminal activity occurring on that private lot, then he has the right to go in there and make an arrest, right? So I'm looking at this thing, and I'm saying, I'm watching across the street from the Jefferson Reeves Health Clinic, where he, this guy had a whole apartment there, a living room, a bathroom, um, everything that you need, and he cooked in this, in this place. But what, what's going on was that, so watching this happen, it's like, we can't continue allowing this to happen. So we put the fence ordinance, and thinking that the police officer would say, "Okay, now we have a fence ordinance, you have to have no trespassing." If I see someone in there, you have to show me proof that you're, that you're supposed to be, if not, I want to trespass you, because now I have the authority to do it. The question is, are you trespassing them? But then the next, the next thing that the, the, an officer requested, or it wasn't an officer, I apologize, it was a member of, of, of the administration, requested was, "Can we have the fences, instead of them being four feet or five feet, can they be ten feet?" You, you're missing the point. The point was to provide notice that you shouldn't be there. The point was so that there wouldn't be any homeless encampments in these places, because what's happening is, and I remember this, and I'll get off, and I'll stop after this. Um, Madam Holmes, is it, it's south of, there'll be, um, the new school that just been built, Douglas, Douglas, south of Douglas.
Yes, sir.
There's a, a street that goes just south of it, goes, and it goes underneath the expressway.
It was considered an alleyway, it was an alleyway.
Right, so that street, I tend to pass by that street, and every time I pass by, it's like my grandmother's street. I say that because every time I pass by my grandmother's street, I look down the street to see who's at my grandmother's house. This is a habit that I've always done. And when I pass by, I always look down there to see if there's, there are officers there, because there tend to be officers down that street, and they'll sit and where they, they can talk, et cetera. And I've always, it always bothered me that they were down there, because there's no one down there. There's absolutely no one down that street, where in other parts of our community, where all the activity is happening, I would love for those officers to meet and just talk, because I would think that that presence would just break some of that activity up. And the, and the reason, and I told, I had a conversation with an officer, and what he said to me was, "We're having a meeting right now, we have a shift change, et cetera, so we're meeting here." And I said, "Fine." But I told him about, "Hey, there's another street where we have a lot of activity, you all should meet there. I think it will make a big difference." And the officer said, "Oh, you know, the two on the street where all the homeless people are." And I said to him, "All those people are not homeless. Some of those people, many of those people are actually there because they realize that I can buy drugs where the chief is standing or sitting, and I can use my drugs where the chairman is." And no police officer is going to come and bother me, because they don't want to deal with homeless people. So what's happening is, people that are dressed like the vice chairman are, not exactly like him, but he's very clean, that's what I mean. People that are dressed like the vice chairman, they don't hold the drugs. The homeless guy... The homeless guy holds, holds the drugs. So when the sale happens, money goes to a homeless guy. Direction is made to a homeless guy. The homeless guy provides the drugs and they keep it moving. The sales are happening right in our face. But I understand, police officers have to clean their own car, they don't want to put homeless people in their car, the smell, they may get pricked by a needle. All these things are people problem that we're having with addressing these crime issues. So you'll stop. You will stop Peanut, who's walking down the street with his pants down, but you won't stop Emily from Delaware, as she put it, who all you have to do is follow her all over the neighborhood, she'll take you to every single person that sell dope. There are two types of, this is why I, I remember someone said this to me. There are two types of white folk in over town. Police officers and drug addicts. It can't be that hard to find what the issues are in over town and help solve them. And so I think the plea is, let's get to work. Let's get to work. And I think, I think Cartwright has a point. There's some agencies that mean well, that have awesome philosophies about how you go about doing things. Reducing the epidemic of HIV. Ensuring that people go, that people eating and don't go hungry in our communities. But all of them are doing it in our backyard and over town. I'm sorry, our front yards and over town. They do everything there. If you, if you can't, we have all these facilities to serve homeless people, but they want to serve them in Miss Cartwright's front yard. They put garbage bins for pickup in her front yard. That's not fair. That's not fair. This is no comment to, to any of our commissioners. But I will tell you, if this was Battersea Woods, I can't build a house in Battersea Woods. There's, there's places, I don't even know the name of this, there's a park just, I think it's, this is your district. There's, there's a park, if we go north here on, on that, what's that side street called that's right next to where the, the Icy Man take that, that north? And you end up going east towards the Little Ward, there's a park back there. That actually, the parking appears to be in the right of way. That says, no parking after dark. And I bet you if you park there, they move you. Great place to pick a, uh, to, to plot a, a tent down, use drugs, sell drugs. It doesn't happen. We have to be honest with this. The reason why you have all of these people in over town is because they've made this an acceptable place to be, to sell, use, buy drugs. So if we're going to do that, then let's just do it as a city. Let's find a place. Let's build a building and let's say, this is drug hanging one-on-one, this is the Carter. You will be allowed to sell, use, and whatever drugs you want to do in this building. Let's be honest about it. Because as long as we're fooling ourselves, as long as we, we, we're sitting around here pretending as if it's not happening or we're doing something about it, or the stats say this and the people say that, man, they do it every day. Guaranteed. Challenge anybody, hop in your car at midnight, wake up at midnight and walk around or drive through over town. Like I said, you could do it seven in the morning. It's, it's probably one of the most disappointing things that I've, that I've had to deal with being a commissioner. Because what will happen is, the powers that be will tell the community that it's awful. Or the District Five Commissioner, the reason why you don't have X, Y, and Z. I've never made a fucking the rest of my life. I don't own, I mean, I'm fired off, but I don't have the right to, to stop someone in the street and question them about their whereabouts and, and what they're doing. And, and I'll tell you, and, and this is something I hope that this new commission moves forward with and I've said this to people publicly and I'll say it here. Crime is not a district issue, it's a citywide issue. And every single one of us should be outraged about whatever crime that's occurring in our neighborhoods. And every time that there's a, a, a crime that's committed in, in, in our neighborhood where we, we walk on the street, and I don't like, you know me, I don't like walking on the street to protest incidents and things that they happen. But every time that something like that happens and someone dies in our community, it is a citywide issue. It's all of our problem. It's not my problem because it happened in my district. I just so happened to be elected out of this district. But it affects all of us. And when it did affect all of us, when it started happening in other parts of our neighborhoods in the eighties, then it became a citywide issue. So I don't know, I don't know what it takes. I, I don't know, I, I don't. I don't know if the powers in a captain, in a major, in a commander, in a chief, in a, in a, in a, in a police officer, I don't know if it's in, I don't know if it's in a, 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 a neighborhood association, a, a community redevelopment agency. It certainly is not within me.
It's in all of us. A- a- and if I may, Commissioner, and I feel you. And, and, and it's good to have this type of conversation because if you don't have it in depth to this link from describing the symptoms to what you're going through, I just stepped up here really because it's well said, but I'm about solutions. The tears, the passion you see in me is about solutions. I wound up born for being someone that creates a one-stop, the thing that everybody doesn't believe in nonstop. I've created things, initiatives, best practices that other people are getting paid for that don't even live in Dade County, let alone Miami. And then I live right there. Now, understand me, I don't just hang around bad places, but you've got to address the pain, if anything, because pain causes more pain. Angry cops create angry people who go out and beat their wives, who have to call more cops, and the cycle just continues because no one is consistent and women always wind up on the end. And I can tell you, I don't believe just in going to die in places. I don't have to when I can step right out my door and I've got pins and stuff that tell me where the bodies at. When I'm a witness, when I can't even give you my address because I'm still exempt. When I'm so exempt that the boy that kills a boy confesses is now free and they don't even tell me you're free. Don't know when I'm coming or going. So people don't understand how important it is to me to have this consistency, to have this reporting, to have this collaboration, to have this connection, to have these incentives, to stop the conflict and the stakeholders that sit at the table. For me last time coming down here to tell you, to have a round table, it's not just something you do every time you get a new mayor, it's a practice in community-oriented policing. It's something you taught me, it's what's helping me, it helps us to see a mother sit a round table. You not outside when they selling dope, you get your behind in here seven o'clock, I'm patting you down. It's passing on information. We fund people who are not here, that fund other people that come into the neighborhood. And when it's time for me to come home and practice what I preach, I ain't got nothing. So it's the perception that we have of each other. Seventeenth Street is separated, Miss Stuart's area is different from my area. I have four block, I, I have four bodies my mayor didn't know about that I got right here. I got pictures. So how do you get more money, get more friends, get more time, get in my face, get a new job, get a new position every six months? I'm living the same thing, but less and less and less. I'm like Big N, I'm gonna leave it here. The more money I see, the more problems I get. But when you have to protect yourself as a taxpayer, when you got somebody telling you that's young, that wasn't that three weeks ago, why are you working with that stick? When you standing out there with kids about to get hit on the car, because nobody's listening to me except for every thirty days I come here. So I'll say this, what is the difference after we get a budget? As opposed to when we get a new budget? What happens in that short period of time? And I'm gonna say this to this lady, I know Miss Kitcher, I know her from church. So that seems we have a relationship when we were little kids growing up. But there were things that we did differently when we communicated and I think that what makes a good net administrator. But here you are, back in the same neighborhood. All this change of positions, buying new stuff for people who don't even understand the culture of people, that's our way of practice. So I challenge you when I come down here, I'm saying, I know better, I was taught better, I created better, but I got no resources. I'm out here spending more time than the average guy that's got a car and the rest. So consistently, yes, let's try some T words. Consistency, collaboration, so that people don't think because they're the University of Miami, all they got to do is treat our medical issues and study us like freaks. That there's not a conflict of interest, that they have to have some real statement, that some of their space needs to go to citizen participation groups. And that their cultural competency needs to be addressed. And, 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 and that's a start. Because every time we have a new change of the guards, every time we have a change of the police officers, every time we have a change of the budget, I get more of what's already fixed and not enough of what's not. And I agree, but if you really want to sit here and we spent fifteen minutes, and this is the best color queen, here's my challenge. Look at the budget, how much more money have we spent on non-preventive materials and resources for police officers instead of first responders? Get back with me on that. Because that's a measure that says we have not practiced, we have not balanced, we have not got equity. And instead of you protecting me when I still gotta protect you, you haven't given me much as a woman to protect myself, but yet I'm a witness.
Thank you, Madam Holmes.
Thank you.
And, and the last thing I'll say, and I said, I said that before like a Baptist preacher, but what would hurt me the most is if this community was treated differently when new people move in. If after all the, the redevelopment that we do in this neighborhood, if only then, when you have new residents in those new fancy buildings, if only then is when people take us seriously, then I know now what I thought. Because all the way around, we're treated differently. I look at the, uh, the, underneath the expressway where we gifted that land or gave that contract to, to this designer to come down and set his headquarters and all the backbending that we did to make it acceptable for him to have a lease and, and, and all these incentives and jobs he'll bring. That was the quickest I've ever seen, what's the name of the group, what's the, what are they called? The expressway people?
Uh, MDX?
No, no, no. The FDOT, that was the quickest I've ever seen FDOT move in my life. And now we have in over town, of course, we're talking about wa, raising the, the, the FDOT property, the, the, the bridge, raising that. But underneath it, the trash, the darkness, the, I mean, it's no, we, we've asked in that neighborhood to improve the lighting and the conditions under there and they drag their feet as if each toe weighs ten thousand pounds. But downtown, just east of us, they use that underground space for parking, they have plants, they have better lighting. It's amazing. Then you'll tell us, oh, well, we can't use that space because we're about to, we're just gonna destroy it anyway and, and we're gonna build new parking, we're gonna do this and we'll do that. When I look at what Commissioner, uh, uh, what our vice chairman did with, uh, with the Omni Park, that's the same type of territory that he has there, it's gonna be developed, it's gonna be this, it's gonna be that. But in the meantime, we got it moving. I know that I'm limited in my authority. But I think as a board, if all of us band together, along with those members of our community, we can do more, we can demand better for that neighborhood. And so I don't want to say what I feel about what it could be. Because I, I, I just, I just don't want to believe it. I just, I just don't want to believe it. So I'm just hoping that, um, that, that, that we can, we can really have some positive change there. Because the neighborhood really needs it. The, the mayor says something, there's a no snitch mentality in, in these communities. I disagree. You watch First Forty-Eight, it was in Miami. Everybody snitches. They all snitch. But what there is, there is domestic terrorism in these communities. You expect Miss Stuart to tell you who pulled the trigger of an AR-15 five feet from her house when they come there every single day? When you won't stop a petty drug sale ten feet from her house? She's not going to cooperate with the police. And why should she? She's in fear of her life. The Florida statutes created a witness tampering law to keep criminals from tampering with, with witnesses. But the problem is that she doesn't even become a witness because she's afraid to even get to that step. So there's a critical, there's a critical misunderstanding of the relationship between the people and the police. Maybe the police aren't afraid, but the people who live there are. And I sat outside on my porch last night. My daughter sleeping in her room. And my sergeant-at-arms came and sat with me on my porch to talk to me about the shooting that happened at the park. We didn't know where the shooter was, still don't know, right? We don't know where the shooter is, we know who he was aiming at. And all I thought to myself is, when the police officer comes and sit on me, and sit on the porch with me after a major shooting where someone just shot into a park, and there's somewhere in this neighborhood, what is he thinking when he walks up to my house? When that police officer comes to my house? Who does he think that I am? What's to stop him from shooting at my house because he's seeing me communicate with the police? So when you got somebody stands outside of someone's house every single day in the, in, 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 in some of our public housing, what do you think they feel? If, with as many shootings and deaths that we have in these neighborhoods, where the shot spawner system is within a certain square mile radius? I mean, this has turned from, 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 from gun violence to a health epi- epidemic where kids are growing up in these neighborhoods and they feel like they, they don't, it's normal to see someone dead on the street. It's normal to see someone carrying an AR-15, it's normal to see the yellow tape, they go to school, they don't get any assistance about it, it's just, I don't know, man, we got a lot of police officers on our, on our team. Um, we put a lot of resources into the people, into the property. But it's not the same. They're not treating people the same. Mr. Corio?
I'll be, uh, I'll be brief, uh, Mr. Chairman. But I do want to say that, you know, Commissioner Ray is, very quickly, you, you've learned, you know, where's issues of this magnitude, you directed the manager. Now, here's the issue. And here's what, if I could give you any advice. Once you direct the manager, you direct the administration, see what they do in a few months, see how it progresses. If nothing happens, nothing changes, you know what? Hold them accountable.
I will.
Hold them accountable. You know, don't be afraid of making a motion to fire the manager. Mr. Chairman, we share, we share a zip code. The same issues that you're seeing in over town, you just go over the bridge into East of Havana and it's happening. You know, it's coming to light more now because there's a campaign and we're pointing out to some of the issues. Yes, absolutely. It's happening in the zip code that we share. And I think it's unacceptable that when you point it out to our administration, there's always the answer of crime statistics show that crime is going down. That's unacceptable. I could tell you this, months back, I did what this commission can ultimately do. And I made that motion to hold them accountable. Unfortunately, it wasn't, uh, the votes weren't there and we continue to have the same problems. But the only thing I would say, uh, as I'm, as I'm leaving, I would tell you, hold them accountable. And the one thing that this commission can do is hold the person that... is hold the person that deals with the day-to-day operation. You can hold them accountable. And if things aren't going the right way, which by the way, with that certain issue, it's not, it's clearly not. Because we wouldn't have discussed this for over an hour, I would say half the guts to hold them accountable. Half the courage to hold them accountable. And you know what? That might be why the new mayor wants to take on that responsibility. So that one person that's being elected can be held accountable. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.